Well, I'll go ahead and call this December sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting to order. Ryan, you want to lead us in pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not used to this chair. It took me rolling all the way back.
You can just give it to them, too.
Well, my feet can't touch the ground, so I'm not in control. Get blue. Well, I guess blue would be.
Good with it, John?
Yeah, she needs to do exonerations here.
Yep, so I move that we approve the exonerations.
Second, on favor?
I'll make a motion to approve the combined divide or surrogate.
Second, on favor?
Do we have any refund?
No, no reason. We have one other request from the citizens of the county. We just brought it out. I think from this morning, are you all familiar with the senior overlooks on Volant Mountain?
Yeah.
Everybody know when it popped up?
Yeah, yeah.
So it had been requested that they would either let the time stay in there or they would like it to be clear. And I figured that was a DOH issue, but they wonder if you guys would kind of step in and kind of request the division pathways to kind of take care of that issue.
We can do that.
Yeah, let's put on our next agenda.
Yeah.
We have it right down there.
Does she have your sticky?
You should work it. All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm making motion to approve payroll December first through the fifteenth.
You're already approved the first.
Okay, fifteenth through the twenty-ninth, sorry.
Second.
Home favor? Vouchers and invoices.
I don't have anything.
I don't think you had a question, or did you find out what it was?
Oh, yeah, I found out what that was.
I do have a question for the thirty-four thousand dollars. Is this something we pre-approved and then they're being paid for it to quote?
What are you talking about? No, I'm going to just say with G and N E.
Is this for the G and N E construction?
That's when we pre-approved. There was something we approved from them for Boomer or something.
Yeah, well.
About two or three months ago.
And they did some pre-dredging for flood-related, but this, this says gravel fabric trucking labor.
Is that the?
This is the road beside pad. Where is? Oh, this is, they didn't.
At the fire?
The office of emergency at the nine-one-one center who did something. That's what it looks like.
That's what it says, emergency management. I'm a little confused about it, but it was in the fire, the fire stuff.
It just says quote. It's not an invoice. Okay, is G on there? G.
Yeah, that was just apparently one of the bids that they got and they had it attached to show that they had received a couple bids. So that was not paid.
And that, where is that for? That's for the fire.
That's for the fire training center, yes.
That's what I thought.
So the eleven thousand dollars that was paid was for, I guess, the bid that came in that was lower than the G and N E bid.
Okay, okay. All right, okay, I was confused about it.
Well, yeah, because it says the quotes to the office of emergency management and it does not run the fire training center.
That's the only question I had. I'll make a motion to approve vouchers and invoices.
Second.
On favor? Meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes from November first, fourteenth, and twenty-seventh.
Second, on favor? State settlements.
You want to stand in my words? Yeah, well, I think it'll be much more efficient for y'all if I just try. If I did. Go distract me, Ruth, and see what happens. All right, state settlements. Make a motion to approve the estate settlements.
Second.
Own favor?
Feel like quick draw. Pretty soon I'll be really efficient at this.
I get lose it.
Okay, the first thing is Gary, you know, it's the affidavit to this that will say seventy-five in the autumn for the twenty twenty twenty. Yeah, twenty twenty clearly plan sale. So this is for the, I probably have to be off, but it's the first day from the twenty twenty twenty.
My motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Thank, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Let me see, Ruth?
Okay, so yeah, well, where's Travis? Travis? He has a new boy for you guys to go through attractively and knows.
Welcome.
You want to come up, brother? You want her? You want to introduce her?
Uh, I mean, yeah, this is Jessica Rex. She started last week in office. She's catching on real quick to doing a fabulous job.
Well, I mean, we officially approve her higher nuts for trunk.
Second.
Own favor?
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down and getting it on the agenda.
All right, yeah, you'll have good.
You, too.
We have three maintenance authorities that we have. And then Danny's maintenance, Marana is custodial, and then Amy is like her floating custodial and sunlight maintenance.
I know, I know you have been very happy, so I move, I move that we officially approve those hires, even though we delegated that authority to county.
Second, on favor?
Okay, the next is just fund forty-two. Is that me and that's the advanced foot fund? You guys have to vote to approve it so we decide on the bank account.
Um, I mean, we approve it.
Second.
Own favor?
And how you keep track of all these accounts?
It's, um, the town, we like it changed. And the next side of you and ask for a letter regarding the commission approving new hires and doing background checks. Anthony and I talked about it a little bit yesterday. Do you want that to come from you? Do you want it to come from me?
I'd like it to come from you, Anthony. I think it'd be better to come from you just to remind, because there's, it's a statutory requirement that the commission approved.
Do you guys want to see it before they're done?
Yeah, I'd like to look at it.
And you wanted to go to just elected officials?
Yeah.
Whatever Ms. Tedder says on that usually log you.
Yes, I mean, what's happening is so, some elected officials are hiring people without putting them through the commission. And my concern is, with the exception of the sheriff, because I'm sure he was doing backgrounds, the backgrounds aren't being run.
It's my understanding, too, that she also wanted a provision in the letter reminding the elected officials that you expect them to always have to go through a background check.
Yes, yes, because, because I think, well, I'm pretty confident that some of them have not been running them, because I'm sure the sheriff does, because that's what he does. But, but the others, I'm not sure. But I, you know, they have a need to hire people sometimes short notice like we do, like nine-one-one center and stuff. And I want it to be clear that they can submit those to us, nut pro tons, but they have to go through Ruth's office to get those backgrounds run. Like, we need to know they're coming and we need to get them on the agenda. And until they get the background back, they should not be hiring anybody.
We usually get that same day we ask for it.
Right, it's not a delay. I mean, there's not a delay, but it's definitely something we need to do. And, and we really frankly need them to fill out the employment application that the county uses, so we have the data we need for their personnel file I hired and, and to do the backgrounds. Yeah, so.
We have a written consent for the background check.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I've always obtained, I've always obtained verbal consent, but I have an idea to have.
Insurance security.
I agree with that. Well, Ruth can tell you what our, what our process is, and that's the process we'd like them to follow, just so we can be consistent and make sure everybody's well-vetted. And it covers them. I mean, that's.
All right. Ruth?
Yeah, the next side of this is twenty point four calendar.
I don't have a problem with it. There's any mention of.
Well, I had a couple of dates that I wanted to consider whether we should have meetings on all those dates. So the first one, because we are, we, it puts us at three meetings in January. Two of them we have to have, well, not technically, we probably don't have to have one on the third. But I was thinking we should strike either the third or the seventeenth. And now that I say that, the third might make more sense, because the we need to get the, something to the executive committees to make sure we can get valid permission or submitted. I know our executive committee isn't meeting again until at least January.
When you see, when you see that.
What do you, what do you, the calendar?
Yeah.
You guys don't have to do any damage with our.
No.
It's all a county clerk.
Oh.
So you don't have to worry. That's all the show.
So we could strike either the meeting or.
And I think the third, don't we have to set up the year?
Yeah, so the third you have.
You have to make.
Yeah, you had.
What do you call it?
Organizational.
Yeah, if we were going to do one, I would do, I'd rather do away.
With the seventeenth.
Yeah, with the seventeenth. We have to.
We have to do the.
We have to do the thirty-first.
And we have to do the third to get the organization.
Right, and then February is on the.
It's set.
Yeah, February's set.
Isn't the board of equalization, didn't we talk about this last year about only doing it twice?
I've got it down to about the bare minimum.
Is that what it was? Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
The other one, and the reason we're doing it, I mean, we have to meet every three days in February. We have to meet every week in March, so it's to kind of give our staff a break. The other one, the next one I was, uh, want to suggest that we strike is June eighteenth because of the holiday. You know, or we could move it. I don't, well, I don't think we should have it, and we could always set a special meeting.
John, what do you think?
I'm okay.
Okay, I don't have a problem.
And then what were my other days? One in September and one in October, I think. Um, anyway, no, we wouldn't have to, you know, the line on September. But, but I thought about the, the first one in September because of Labor Day, but that's all right. We can, we could strike it if we need it. Those were the only two I thought we should strike, so January seventeenth and June eighteen.
Are you good, John?
Yes.
Okay.
I think she said January seventeenth and June.
June eighteen.
Eighteen.
June eighteen.
Thank you, I did.
Sorry, I'll speak louder.
I did hear that, thank you.
So I move that we approve the calendar with those amendments, striking the meetings on June seventeenth, uh, on June eighteenth and January seventeenth.
Second. All favor?
And then with regard to the Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And then we have to approve the.
The holiday calendar. And so I move that we approve the holiday calendar as presented. And also, I move that we authorize the county administrator to issue a memo in the event that the governor calls a last-minute holiday. Because that has happened on the regular.
Yeah.
The guys have been voting on that to approve it.
Yeah, yeah, and yeah, that we authorize her to make those amendments, because it's too late. By the time he calls it, it's the day before.
Now, when he approves it, just for that year?
Yeah.
Okay, so he has to do it every year. I was gonna say.
Yeah, he has to.
There's not any more days to work after he gets done. And anyway.
So. What happened with the new governor.
Anyway, so, so I guess let me change, let me change the wording of my motion. I move that we approve this as presented, along with any other uh, last-minute holidays the governor calls for the state.
I'll say. Own favor? Take the big spill.
Did you motion on Anthony's saying that letter?
Um, no, I move that we approve a letter to the elected officials about our hiring process. Make sure they get background checks and approval by the commission as required by law.
Own favor? Okay, number seven, Ruth?
Yeah, that's the Paint Creek spill settlement is.
Well, I was just going to ask, was he on? Does it says two hundred and fifty thousand for each county, right?
Right, I can, I can explain it. I can explain it in, in general terms, and then Mike can chime in if I've left anything out. So basically, there was only a million dollars total. That was the insurance limit of the trucking company that the drunk driver was, you know, employed by. The drunk driver had no money, and the trucking company has gone out of business, so there, there's. He was, so there's nothing, there's nothing left. I didn't even know.
Well, he was, it was a limited liability company, but him and his wife, as I recall, were the.
Okay. So it exhausted there. They probably reorganized. He's probably driving drunk somewhere else. But, but for this, for the purposes of this, there was a million-dollar policy, the state for its expenses and the cleanup that it did. And a private plaintiff all got half of that. So half of it was left to divide between Canal County and Fayette. Now, Canal in the beginning was trying to suggest, even though it happened in Fayette, and Fayette County residents were more affected by it than Canal County residents who were downstream of the spill, that, that they should get eighty percent and we should get twenty percent. That's how they started out. And of course, you know, I balked at that and said, uh-uh, no. So now they've come back at fifty-fifty. While I don't think fifty-fifty is necessarily a fair depiction of who had suffered the most, if we continue to push and litigate it, there's not going to be anything left.
I agree.
For, for our people.
I agree.
So, so basically, the suggestion is, and Canal County has already very well publicized what it plans to do with its, its money, minus attorney's fees. So we'll get two hundred and fifty thousand minus attorney's fees, and, and Mike has submitted the cost and the cost for the expert and that sort of stuff. He submitted an invoice at my request to Anthony for Anthony's approval, so I'll let Anthony speak to that in just a second. That will come out of the two hundred and fifty. And after that, then the money, the remaining funds would go into an account that Ruth creates for that purpose. And we can decide at a later meeting how we want to allocate those funds. I think that we need to have some discussions with the health department. Uh, my suggestion is that we, we have them apply it toward water testing countywide, because there'll be too much money to only just, you know, we're definitely prioritizing, look after the Paint Creek residents. You want to continue to have water testing for a while. But the DEP has gone in and certified that it is cleaned up, that there's not detectable amounts of the spill in the water or the soil. Our expert has, has agreed with that conclusion. And significantly, though, the watershed association for Paint Creek has been in the press saying that some people still see bubbling that they associated with a chemical reaction on the soil when it rains. So there may still be concerns out there, but I think there'll be plenty of money in this settlement to, to help mitigate those concerns. Plus, if we decide, and that's what I'm going to pitch you guys to do, is, is to work with the health department to set up a fund for water testing countywide. Because we know we have water issues countywide, but anyway, so that's it. And Mike, do you have anything to add?
Uh, very well done, Commissioner. The, the one thing I would say to the commission is the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection has said, no further remedial actions are necessary. And, and when I say that, I think that's very important for the commission to understand that, that you're not, by accepting this settlement, you're not leaving a problem that exists. You're leaving a problem that has been approved by DEP as it's okay, and there's no action necessary. There's no threat to human health, or there's no threat to the environment. So I think that's a key component, and I propose an order for you again, for y'all to look at. But I, I put that in there, because I think that's a key component of, of the fat county commission protecting the citizens of fat county, which I believe you are doing through this settlement.
I appreciate that, because that, that was an issue as we were negotiating. Canal County just wanted the money to be paid to Canal County and Canal County deal with things. Our side of the negotiation was, we wanted remediation. We prioritize remediation of the problem first. And, and then any remaining money would come back to us. So we were on different sides from Canal County on that issue, but now that DEP is saying the issue has been remediated, that's no longer an issue from our perspective. So that, you know, that was kind of a, another area that Mike negotiated on our behalf.
Hey, Mike, I got one question. The, the twenty-two thousand dollars in expert witnesses. The, the expert witnesses, who was that?
No, it's Dr. Scott Simonton. The, the company's called Ashby Tucker, which is named after his two kids. But it's Dr. Simonton who's appeared in front of the commission numerous times. He's the professor, the PhD guy from Marshall University, and he's the one that went on site, did the investigation, all that kind of stuff. And, and I will, I'll note for you just a little bit here comparing fat to Canal County, because it's a little bit different that the way you're structured on your attorneys and your experts. The, the, the Canal County, they had about sixty-nine thousand dollars in expert witnesses in testing. We had roughly twenty-two or whatever the number is. Canal County pays its attorneys different than y'all pay me. Canal County's attorneys are paid on a monthly basis. They submit hourly invoices to the commission and they're paid. So my understanding of Canal County in their settlement, the numbers that got reported, that does not include the attorney fees. That includes the, the expert witness fees, the testing fees, the amount paid towards uh, the, the establishing the test to pick up the impogen. So, so there's, it's a little bit different structure between Canal County and Fat County, uh, as the way you retain your attorneys. If, if you read the articles in Canal County. So I just point that out, expert-wise and attorney-wise.
Well, and that reminds me, too, I mean, it wouldn't be improper for us to, for the county to recover what it invested in that test. Remember, we authorized funds to share with Canal County the expense of that test. So out of the settlement, we could reimburse the taxpayers for that and put the remainder, of course, toward whatever we, we elect to do.
Okay, that was the only question when I looked at, looked over this.
Yeah, and so Anthony, what are your thoughts on the?
Couple things. I mean, litigation of this nature is extremely complicated. Beyond what any of the law into my office, I think, are capable of handling. I think it's also worth noting that Mike reduced his fee significantly. And the amount, uh, the net going to the counties is greater. It's actually not quite double, but close to double what the legal fees were. So I don't have a problem with it. I recommend the county approval.
I agree with you on that. And I also want to note, too, that the expert, you know, Mike engaged him after the G, DEP made its findings to make sure that he agreed with those findings. So we, we have the benefit of that also.
Okay, my motion to approve.
Second.
Own favor?
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, can I tell you one more thing, just to make it easy? The, uh, uh, one of the prior meetings, the commission established a sub-fund for this particular spill event. So again, Ruth should already have that and be able to deposit the money. If there's any problems, I'll certainly work with Ruth, but I think you've already established the structure for accepting the money.
Yeah, I think, I think we did.
Courthouse facilities?
Which one is this?
This is just the new one?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is just the contract stating that we're going to approve, uh, we're going to accept the hundred thousand dollar grant for the annex roof. And then there are four signatures for Tom that we can do later.
I can do it.
And that's the actions they, yeah, we haven't had.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'll do them in there. I just gotta stand up, lean over, and it's a process, believe me. So I'll do anything.
And is this just the standard contract that we've done with them before?
So all in favor?
Your debate, I move that we approve.
All in favor?
Just skip all the nonsense.
Uh, the sheriff's department.
So you guys opened the three bids last time. Dan said you looked over them. Uh, there was one from Pullman, Trisco, and Keystone. So Pullman was the lowest bid, but Dan pointed out the low bid does not include the bid bond. So that's not a total price. And there's also a clause in there that says, subject to a mutually negotiable contract, which, what's the point of getting sealed bid if you're going to have to negotiate your contract? Which means that's the.
Right.
Price will change. So with that being said, then it would go to your second flows bidder, which was Keystone.
Okay, so Pullman is disqualified.
Yeah, it was a.
Well, we've already said that the bid bond is required. Okay, what was Keystone's? Tom was asking.
Keystone was a hundred and seventy-six thousand ninety-two dollars.
What was the other one, just for the heck of it?
A hundred and fifty-seven thousand four hundred, and then Trisco was two hundred and seventy-three thousand.
A hundred thousand dollar difference. Well, I move that we approve the Keystone bid.
Second.
Own favor? Now, is it on to the pool now?
Yep.
I hope it's going to be quick, but I feel it's not. Like, it's about ten-thirty, but anyway.
Yeah, four minutes.
Oh, we. It should both approve. Now, we'd sent Ruth the task order to you guys review, which would include the engineering design. I actually come up with the fix, to, to fix the pool. Like, that was, uh, the phase one was a million dollars, and that was to just fix what's there now to have a functioning pool.
Okay, well, I think it's what we was talking about doing to start with. Just that, but I mean, I'm trying to pull all the information here. I got some outlines, but that was where I wrote down some stuff. Is it just one right here?
Yeah, that's it.
Because something in here, it said that we, we already pre-approved. Yes, I was a little confused when I got outlined in here. But I think the only thing we approved is a design, an architect, a, a design and engineering, architectural design and engineering in the very beginning on the RFP. I don't think we approved anything this last November first.
No.
It says that we approved it, so.
What page you looking on?
It's E on the first, and that's very.
Uh, what he's, what he's trying to do there is he's trying to say that, that was, what he's trying to say is, is that, that this task order is for phase one of this guy right here, which was just the fix, not the redesign of the whole pool. He's trying to limit the, I guess, develop a scope of work.
So we got to put out a bid, though, don't we?
No, no, not at this point.
If you're going to do any construction, it has to be bid out.
But we gotta, you gotta have a design before you bid package.
Where's, I mean, that was what we originally, I thought, asked you for is the design and, and architectural design and engineering. Or, in fact, you look here, it says right here in the first RFP, architectural engineering to complete a design.
Yes. Well, we, we broke this up in the task orders. That way he wasn't, because we didn't know what the scope of work.
So we don't have it, that wasn't to, to give us a design to put out to be it.
The first task order was just for all the preliminary concepts and the, and the proposed estimates and all that stuff, for you to make it a, a decision of what you want.
The select firm will complete a, will complete a design to repurpose the parts of the, of the existing pool, which can be salvaged. So that, so the seventy five thousand dollars was just as a preliminary, and I thought, I thought we supposed to have architectural design to work off of.
That was what I thought as well.
The task, task order one, task order one was for us to go through, give you all the preliminary concepts and all the cost estimates and and do the uh, the geotechnical drilling and stuff that was involved in that. All that was phase, what what we consider like step one, task one.
So if if I thought we were supposed to have some type of architectural and engineering design. So to hire somebody to do the architectural engineering to complete a design.
That's what the R F P was for, Tom, but when when we, when we were developing scope of work, it was anywhere from a five million dollar project to a ten million dollar project, then all you want to put in there. Ten million, thirty percent of ten millions, a whole lot of money for you guys to end up and pay. So we did it by the task orders. That way we could keep the costs down and just do specific items until you made a decision what you wanted to do. At this point, you made a decision that you're just wanting to remediate what's there so that he can have a pool to run. And that's what that task word two will do. It's, well, I think it was a hundred grand or something like that. And that includes all the engineering architectural stuff to get the existing pool up and running.
Don't let me hear your slot, you're the contractor. So we're going to pay like, how much was the first amount that we paid? Seventy five thousand. Seventy five thousand. Now we're going to put another hundred thousand on top of that in order to get a design. How do you need that?
Yes. Yeah, but the first one included, like I said, all the, all of your preliminary concepts, like your preliminary designs where you guys can make a decision on how you wanted to to approach this thing.
Right, I I understand what you're saying, Chris, and we took it as a different thing with us. That's what this R F P, do you want to look at the R F P?
Uh, no, no, I know what the R F P was, like I said, I but when when we started to build the schedule work, I wasn't willing to come in here and say, hey, here's a here's a scope or agreement for, you know, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars for pool design. The design of the Todd Mahaw Pool when you didn't really know what you wanted. We were trying to get our feet underneath this.
Well, what what I thought is we get three, a few different designs is what originally we talked about is few different designs, and I think it even mentions that in here too.
Yeah, you you got five preliminaries.
Few different designs and uh
Well, we need to design where we could, because
Yeah, you
You know, government is peculiar, right? Like you, like we want, we needed the design so we could apply for grant funding for them and to and to bid out or to bid out the work.
Right.
Which we're required to do.
Yes.
Um, so so we're at a point where like, we've spent seventy five thousand dollars and we don't have any designs.
Well, you spent seventy five thousand, you got five preliminary designs with preliminary cost estimates. To make a decision, plus you got geotaped.
It says to complete a design. I don't know what it says.
Those weren't, but but the designs that we received were not, like, I'll tell you, when I got them, they weren't within this, I mean, we have been pretty much consistently talking about a million dollar fix, you know? We weren't, we never said we were going to try to get up to ten million. I mean, those designs to me blew me out of the water.
With all due respect, that's not what I was asked to.
Well, there's phases, hold on, there was phases. Now, now, we talked about phases, and the first phase was not ten million dollars.
No.
In fact, when I come to, when I come to you, I said, the first time me and you met at the pool, I said, I want to fix this to where we we fix the pool and then we do stages on the other one. I think from the very beginning, I said stages. I don't know whether we can pull up the recording or not, but even back there when I met you down there, I'm talking about stages. I don't think this commission can afford ten million dollars to start off the bat.
Even five million dollars.
I said from the very beginning, phases. And all the shit that you gave us, to be honest with you and due respect, there was no phases in it. You said this design, this design, and this design. And I said, brother, I don't think we can even move into a second phase with this first, with this first uh, design you give us because it doesn't say anything like that. My objective was always to do the development of that pool in phases that can be used. The second phase will coincide with the first phase in order to move into it. The last time we talked again, and then I come up with figures myself, I said, listen, I think these are over budgeted. I think you, everything is over, the price is over what it should be. And this is where I become people don't like before. I sat there and told you that, and then I come up with my own figures that should be a close to a million dollars, but luckily you come in and you had something around a million dollars. But still, them phases was not there. I explained the phases, I wrote the phases down, and I said, the next, the next phase, if we go to phase two, I want to be able to take the baby pool, use it for a entrance pool for the uh, slides. Uh, that's called phases.
Well, you gotta know, you gotta know where you want to end up for your phase.
Okay, well.
And you didn't know where you wanted to.
The the first one.
Just one second. In order to know what we had to work with, they had to go in and see what was underneath to see if they could find that large void.
Well, no, I understand that.
He'd already said he could fix it from the very beginning, John. He says we can work with it.
Okay, but that's what we had asked them to do, to find out what we needed in order to move forward.
I didn't, I didn't have an, uh, there was no, no one knew what was going on underneath that pool floor.
Okay, we
So before you found out what was going on, how how could I tell you how much it's going to cost to fix them? So I don't even know what the problem is.
Okay, was it seventy five thousand dollars to find out what was going on underneath?
Part of, that was part of, plus five preliminary concepts. We were going to give you three, we ended up giving you five. We were going to do three, we did five and the cost estimates. And then you guys looked at them, you said, okay, this is the thing we want to go after. And and now we're phasing it accordingly.
Well, what's the phases?
Well, you got phase one is the existing refurbish. Phase two would be the mechanical upgrades because if needed, remember, we we just explained that, if if the pumps run and it keeps the water clear and it does its job, then we're good. Those pumps have been running about three years. Who knows? You want, you you might, we might go in there and put this new pool shell in here and fix it, and he might fire a pump up and you have nothing. And then you're looking at another million dollars for pumps. That's, no one knows the condition of those pumps. You can't even run them until you get water and pull them to it. So there's no testing or anything you can do on it. Phase three would be the plunge pool area and the zero death waiting pool where you convert the baby pool to a zero death and put your slides in. Well, rehab it to where you can't put slides in it. You can't do the slides because we're trying to keep them all in small increments. Phase four would be adding the slide towers and the mechanical upgrades for for the existing pumps to pump the water up. And phase five would be a splash pad. And that's, that's all based on what we can, what what I would call number five, which was a combination of several different pools that then we picked. This was what phase five, this is the new pool that you guys, the uh, what me and you looked at that day. That would be your final product.
I don't think I had this one. I think this is what we talked about. Is is the final stage yet.
Yeah, that would be your final.
I like to see it.
It it takes five steps to get to that point. Or if the pumps were.
Okay, so we don't have, I mean, I I'm and I understand all that, but we don't have a, we got to pay for another architectural design and engineering for the, for the first stage of pool.
This would be the fi, this is what you would consider to be like your final design on a project. So so the first, the first increment that you paid for was for the field investigation, the geotech, the as-built survey to identify everything, all the existing conditions, like a P E R.
I want, I want, go ahead and give us a talk. Hey, I want, look at this, uh, Anthony.
It included
Tell me what that R F P means. Can you tell me what that R F P means?
And all of your cost estimates.
So we have a public hearing that's scheduled at nine thirty.
Yeah, so this is going to have to continue afterwards. Yeah, okay, we'll hold off, yep. Are they here? You're putting in that date, which it's actually need the whole thing, see what's supposed to. Good, yeah.
We have a nine thirty, nine forty five, and they're all, so.
Are they all here?
Yeah. This is the easy one.
Okay, public hearing at nine thirty?
Yeah.
Morning. So, hey, it's election season. So you guys are going to get to see a whole lot of me for the next about three or four meetings.
Sure.
Right, so this first one is um, when we did the redistricting and we had to essentially resign every precinct in the county because of the legislative law, blah, blah, blah. There were lots of little places that we missed that needed kind of adjusted, that we could adjust, there's some we can't adjust. And so I've been kind of compiling those, and we're going to get tries to get this fixed. Probably not all of them, but I found some that did. So that's what these, there's actually six, one just came to my attention last week, um, actually this Monday, Mount Hope would like to go onto our county ballot, which will mean we will have to uh, redraw precinct twenty three to match the municipal boundaries of Mount Hope and those people that live in that are currently in twenty three that aren't in city limits will put them probably in nineteen, which is the one it's supposed to be. Or uh, but we might have to come back for another public hearing specifically on that one, but.
Okay, so does this take care of just where the lines were drawn, redrawn? This doesn't take care of any municipalities?
Not, no, not right now.
Okay.
I
How long do you have to get those municipalities set up?
At at this point in the game, if they are not requesting to go onto our ballot, I'm going to not try to mess with it. I mean, if the legislature decides to uh, bring that forth again, that all municipalities will have to be on the county ballots as they have discussed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's when I would start to do that. So that's why we're doing them. Montgomery was easy, they were already, city limits of Montgomery was already a precinct.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Mount Hope is not going to be difficult. Um, when we get into, if we have to get into Oak Hill and Fayetteville, Oak Hill is going to be the worst. Let's be honest, they've drawn some interesting shapes, but um, I don't think we'll need to worry about, at this point, we really won't worry about any of those for the twenty four elections, we just can't. And there's no way the legislator, legislature could govern that to even to be due for the twenty four election. It would have to be the twenty six.
Okay, so with these moves, are we talking just a move? I see there's going to be a new precinct made.
Yep.
Is that involve new equipment?
Well, we did that grant, and we did get four new express votes and one new D S two hundred. We're going to be a net same number precincts. Um, if you want me to run down these in order, I did them kind of in order of of how many people are going to be in, you know? The first one's pretty simple. In Golly Bridge, there's that row of cabins across the river, there right where you get to Golly Bridge. Um, currently, three of those have full-time residents. And the others could be lived in, they're addressed by nine one ones. Uh, no one is registered there yet, but if they do, they would be taking a boat from their cabin across the river to Golly Bridge. Right now, they would be having to drive to either Fallsview or uh, Page Head Start, which is on the other ones. Um, the next one is just in Anstead, the line followed uh, Auburn Creek on Hopwell Road, which wove it in and out of houses.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'm just moving it back a little bit so that all the houses on that stretch of road go into precinct sixty instead of sixty five. The next one, seventy four sixty eight, that was also a a request-driven one, which was one I had looked at. Precinct seventy four has a weird little tail on it that's not necessary, and so I'm just going to move those people into the adjoining precincts. Um, the next two are the biggies. Uh, I want them to combine eleven and twelve in the city of Oak Hill. They both vote in Lu, at the Lewis Center currently. This would just mean everybody would be going into the main gym part instead of one precinct going off to the side. Um, my plan right now is to keep the same number of machines, actually keep the same number of coworkers in that location to help expedite moving people through the line, eleven where we had difficulty at the last election with
Take one of their offside.
So, yeah, so that's And then the lastly, this was also request-driven.
Good.
Um, and this was actually also recommended, I think your state when I brought it up to them. Um, it'll take the people who are on the southern side of the river, of Canal River there at Deepwater up to Canal Falls and make them their own precinct. It'll be relatively small. Um, but that makes so much more sense unless they would ever get the Boons Grove, that bridge fix that Canal Falls right there. The, there's a lady that lives like at the falls that's registered voting. She currently right now has to go to Fallsview, which means she drives all the way out of that heart, all the way down to Montgomery, then halfway back up the other side.
How far is is Page farther than Montgomery is from Deepwater? I think they're about the same distance. I mean, Montgomery is probably, is about three and a half miles from Deepwater.
Yeah.
And then the farther you go up, I mean, maybe up to four miles, but um.
Could be, and I'll be honest, I have not, there doesn't seem to be any suitable places to have a a polling place in deep water that I'm aware of.
No.
Uh, in that area right there, um, we kind of looked, there's a, there is a church.
Kimberly Elementary isn't open anymore, is it, or is it?
I don't think that it is.
Mm-hmm. Most of those people, well, I don't know.
They have a huge church there. Do church, do we do it in church?
We can, yeah.
There's a huge church right there at the Mount Armstrong Creek.
I thought about that one. I, we, we've looked at those, and that can be something that we decide if we want to make the polling place and come back to you and
To create the new precinct and then we can identify the polling place.
We can do that in January, if we want to do both of those things. Um, do that and do the Mount Hope.
That'd be worth exploring because I'm just thinking of sending all those people up the mountain, especially in November.
Well, I, some of those people used to go to Page, the ones that are, but that's fine. I mean, I, he'll probably still particular voter will complain, no matter what, but it is closer than Fallsview, so.
Would only be like a mile, mile and a half.
Yeah.
If if you could get that Armstrong Creek location.
Mm-hmm.
You know, one of the churches in the Deepwater area, they do meet once a month. They hold service there. So there's a possibility, it's the one down by the old water tank.
Mm-hmm.
That church meets once a month, so.
I think I know she's talking about the big one and that one, because we, the ADA compliance stuff, we, is probably
Yeah.
And if it's a place
On the size, because there's two hundred and fifty voters that would be going to this, so.
Yeah, and that church has nice parking and it's level going in, there's no steps or anything.
Okay, well, since we got a nine forty five, I'm going to move that we approve these proposed changes and and I do want to to keep looking at locations for forty one, because you've got forty two there. I don't want you to have an eleven and twelve issue at that location.
That's also true, but we can't put them together because that's the line between uh, fifteen fifty one, the house was.
Yeah.
I I understand.
Let me say.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're back in.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, Angela. We're staying on. Isn't that, I mean.
Yeah.
Just, I think. Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 you're going to have to handle them, I can go.
So these are um, houses that we've either discussed, but they're just getting bids, um, that with the re, bids, we take the lowest one.
I just saw they're bidding to have three. There's one there.
There's two there.
Is that the envelope?
No, there's just one.
Oh, okay.
This was just an envelope.
All right.
So, but on this, you guys look at the lowest bid, and then Reeve does, they're due diligence once they actually the very first to move forward to make sure they've got all their bonds and stuff like that, so.
I want to take Reeve to get back with you on that.
Once we actually either have a demo order, a court order, or voluntary, within a week or two, they'll look at it.
So it it, the minute the commission, whatever the thought I said.
Say it's coming down.
Okay.
We, some of these we have in addition, we just went ahead and got this because we're working on it.
Reeve can approve it even before, if there was an agreement with the property owner.
Yeah, they'll approve.
Pre-approved, okay. I'm putting this together in my process.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, once we do your test, they've got like twenty things we've got to do before.
Okay, okay.
But the one I'm opening is from Empire Salvage.
And each one's going to have three different prices, just so you know.
Yeah, I see that.
Because they're individual houses.
The total, so for the Kimberly property is thirteen thousand, Charlton Heights nine thousand and Danese. Eight thousand for a total of thirty thousand even is what Empire Salvage has suggested.
I kind of got it counted.
Well, they put it in separate envelopes. They put in good separate envelopes? No, this is two different. Okay, um. For Aster. One thirty-six Wallace is nine thousand two hundred. Six or sixty-two eleven Midland Trail is eight thousand. And Stanford Road is nine thousand.
The total.
Total, they didn't give a total.
Well, let's add it.
It's a.
What are they again?
Twenty-six two. Okay, and then there's Smokey Joe.
That's the name?
Uh, yes, Smokey Joe Enterprises. Um, for one thirty-six Wallace, it's twenty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-five. Midland Trail, it's fourteen thousand six fifty. For Stanford, it's sixteen thousand four fifty. For a total of fifty-five thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Okay, and I have. Reclaim Company LLC and um the Kimberly property is twenty-two thousand eight hundred. Carlton Heights is fourteen thousand nine hundred eighty and Stanford Road is twenty-one thousand nine hundred eighty. For a total of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty. I'll pass another one down to you, John, because I have one left off.
Oh, okay.
That right up below. I have another one here, Grove Home Strand and Delk P L L C. Appears to be a West Virginia firm, yeah, from Wheeling. But it says that, oh, so it's a. Law firm, um, Aster Oilfield Services Inc. is the. We do?
Yeah, for Aster.
Aster Oilfield.
Why do we have two? Was that the? Let's make sure they're the.
Well, this is just Aster just giving us all of the uh. Yeah, and this is, they're just giving us all of their um.
Paperwork?
Yeah, paperwork.
Because I've got. Well, let's confirm ninety-two hundred dollars for Kimberly.
Yep.
Eight thousand Charlton Heights and eight thousand for Danese.
Nine thousand for Danese.
Yeah, they have eight thousand for Danese and.
This one has nine million.
Yeah, so.
They bid against themselves.
It's a big company, I think. I mean, it's Aster Oilfield, but maybe they don't.
Well, this was submitted by their, their counsel, it looks like. Okay, well, that's. Let's make sure we put those two in proximity. So yours is. Where's your Aster one?
Right here.
You have the envelope that goes with.
Yep.
Two different kinds of envelopes here.
And then here's the others.
Twelve-five at ten AM. The one I have. And. Eleven twenty. That's interesting. So the twelve-five one has a lower price.
And I've never spoken to anybody from there, so I don't know. On how we handle it.
Well, we handled the cheaper prices what they gave. I mean, it's new bids for the same job.
Same company. So they submitted, it appears to be an updated bid that's a thousand dollars less than the previous bid, which. I want to see what the other lowest bid is. I don't know, that concerns me. I don't know. Coming back in with a million dollars less, it's weird. Just irregular, that's all. Okay, so. John, do you have one more over there?
No, that was.
That was it?
That was the uh legal information for their, for Aster, for all of their license and everything else, their insurance. So they sent in two different envelopes instead of just.
They sent all that again in this other envelope too.
Yeah.
So. What was that total? So that was the lowest bid.
Yeah.
Even, even with the thousand dollar difference, it was the lowest bid, Aster was.
About four.
Yeah, a few thousand dollars. The next lowest bid was Empire thirty thousand dollars.
Was this second bid will make reference to the first bid?
No.
No. It's weird, I know. What happened is, is two of their, their supervisors got together and both bid it. One bid a thousand bucks under the other to get the job. And they could just make it. They probably get an extra. Maybe there's a bonus for. Anyway, what's the commission want to do? Take the lowest bid or what?
Well, I, I feel like they qualified for the lowest bid even before they modified the bid, so.
Yeah.
Um, either way, like I, I would have been worried if they beat this company by a thousand dollars. Like, that's what had me like.
Do you want to award the total job? Because I think the Charlton Heights shop, um, well, they were through the lower in all three, correct?
Yes. Yeah, so.
Now they are because they equal, they were tied Empire for eight thousand.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve uh Aster as your contractor for those three properties.
The recent bid.
That's the lowest bid.
The most recent bid.
Yes, the most recent bid.
The, yeah, the cover layers dated December first and the, we received it yesterday, December fifth. So, you know, I think it's fair to presume that that's their final bid.
Yes.
Okay.
Second. Own favor. Now, if they, Angela, Reeve looks at this and doesn't think everything's. Let's ask, I'm just trying to figure out the process to make sure, doesn't figure out that that third they can do the job the way Reeve wants them to do it. I guess we'll come back and we'll go for the second.
And you have to also realize the three houses that bid, they may come at different time.
Right.
So, like, um, but yeah, if Reeve looks at it.
Um, the uh, the dem demolition that we did on the property in Scarborough went very well. I was there, I was there and got to watch him take the psycho and crush it. It was really, really cool.
Just so you guys are aware of.
Yeah.
You're doing.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we need to go into executive session for legal advice on the ten o'clock hearing since it is a full hearing with counsel.
Said at uh ten twenty-five, we was in the second sessions with legal advice, no decisions was made. Uh, I'm gonna let Ms. Taylor take us from here.
All right, Mr. Canterbury, can you step up to the podium, please? This is with regard to the ten o'clock item, and this is, what is this, our third hearing? Fourth, that's what I thought. I was saying that the other day, but then I couldn't think of what the middle one was. So it's my understanding from the prosecuting attorney that you did have counsel, but you've decided to retain. Other counsel in this matter, is that true?
Um, I have a counsel for other matters that we, me and him had discussed this.
And that was Matt Bradford.
Once I talked to Anthony, they were on a first-name basis, I didn't.
We all, I'll just tell you what he told you. I mean, I'm a lawyer too in this county. I'm on a first-name basis with Matt too because we all work together on lots of different things. So it's more of a professional courtesy than it is a um buddy buddy, like we, we don't hang out.
Matthews is a nice guy, just.
He's a very good lawyer, too.
And just, it's not the um, the bulldog gun one.
Okay, okay, I, well, and and that's your, that's your personal choice. So is it your intention to retain other counsel or are you wanting to handle this?
On how this.
Depending on how it goes. Um, well, what I wanted to ask you is if you're available now, our building inspector is here at the meeting. Um, to go down to the property so he can take some pictures.
I'm, I'm very stressed out about this right now. As a matter of fact, at this point, I'm either having a panic attack or a heart attack. Again, this is.
Do you need us to call an ambulance?
But the, I've been down there working for sixty days daily and I'm not seeing anybody show up to want to inspect the property.
Well, I, I under, we did reach out to you and he did not receive.
Sixty days, over sixty days working, nobody showed up to.
He called you. Well, he, he called you before yesterday also because we had a witness.
Monday he called.
And he called before Monday. He called earlier in November. Is that right, Alan?
All the calls I have is from, from Monday.
Yeah, the one time he called you, you didn't have voicemail set up.
That was Monday.
Or it was full or something like that, huh?
That was Monday.
No, it was a different, it was a different time. Wasn't that back in November?
They are too after the last.
Last meeting, so. Back in November, but anyway, I don't want to argue with you if you, if you're having chest palpitations or something, so. Okay, because I'm, I'm a veteran too, so.
Okay.
I want you to know that we, this commission supports veterans. Their families have veterans. This son, um, so. Now, you provided us some information that we're making copies of right now because I understand it was your only copy, so we wanted to make copies. So we have copies for ourselves. Um, so you're not willing to let the building inspector inspect your home at any time? The inside or?
It, it doesn't need to be and at this point, uh.
We need it.
Given, given the fact that the original complaint was three things. And all those have been corrected. And then our original agreement was the building inspector would, would meet me out there. And then y'all sitting out there with me not being there, he made a report. I corrected all those as well. And now we're close to ninety days in this.
Right, and that should be a good thing for you because you were the one asking for all the time.
No, no, y'all told me not to work on.
Well, we told you you shouldn't because, you know, it still could get torn down.
Okay. It might be, it, it, it very well could be torn out, I understand. There's no doubt about it.
Well, I, I want to clarify a couple of things because, because among the things you provided us were. Posts that you made on Facebook and, and I want to correct you.
No, sir, no ma'am, I didn't put anything on Facebook.
On social media, GoFundMe, there was a GoFundMe posted somewhere, um, where you claimed that the commission profits from these. Um, properties.
So much profit.
No, no, nobody's profiting. Um, we just opened some, sir. Sir, can you let me finish speaking and then you can speak, okay? Um, the commission just opened some bids. We have to pay, in fact, we lose money because we have to pay for bids. We are trying to clean up the county. That is the sole motivation of this program. Um, there are no criminal penalties associated. You know, you claim that you could go to jail. That's not going to happen based on this civil process in this courtroom. And I wanted to ask you, are you, 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 your, your GoFundMe is worded as if. Uh, you're living in the home and the commission is kicking you out of your home. The last time you were in here, you said that you live somewhere near Beckley. So are you living in the home now? And how long have you been living there?
Uh, several weeks. Um, the um, in the first meeting, that was one of the uh, uh, Mr. John here. It's one of his requirements that, that I get utilities turned, turned on as quick as possible and, and moving. And I had.
Okay. We do have knowledge that you had requested a leak adjustment in town of Pax from the Public Service District for a home that you were going to reside in there. So.
Own that home.
So you own a home there and you're trying to get a leak adjustment for that home and you are no longer living in Beckley.
No.
And you're no, and you're not living in Pax, you're living in this home.
Okay, I'm, I'm not going to answer any more questions.
Okay, well, we're just trying to clarify because our whole, the reason we want to pictures of that interior is because we're trying to. Keep from tearing down your house. We want to make sure that we're right about its dilapidated condition. You're telling us you've made improvements, you gave us pictures of cabinets, but they're not installed. So, you know, if you want us to. To be able to, you know, giving us access would give us that information. Um, we don't have all the information. We need to make a decision without it. At least one in your favor.
Yeah, well, it's, in, it's, in my opinion, that, that no matter what I do, you're going to make it. In my favor, it's, it's not going to be on my favor, no matter what I do, so that's my opinion.
Would you like time to retain an attorney on this matter?
No, ma'am, I'm, I'm, again, this is very stressful for me. It's just, it's just too stressful. And right now I don't have, I don't have any time, I just, I just need.
Okay, sir, then I suggest that you go ahead. We'll move this.
Do want to say one more thing. Mr. Canterbury, all this is recorded anyway. So the recording that you're making right now, it's not a big issue, huh? Okay, I just want, just want you to know that. Oh, this is on Z, on YouTube.
We put it on the public website.
You can record all you want.
Okay, um, well, Mr. Canterbury, since you're not feeling well, I'm gonna um move that we postpone this hearing until. Our January third meeting and um, and that you go seek the medical.
Second.
Need.
You want a favor? Thank you, Mr. Canterbury. Okay, ten thirty. Did we miss ten fifteen?
Sure, I ten thirty. Do I have another public hearing in ten forty-five?
Thanks, Alan.
All right, we'll, we're gonna get out to, so the ones I'm presenting you, um.
She's almost done, we'll get it for you.
So the ones I'm presenting you, these are ones that have gone to the beautification committee, we have spoke to them and they are all willing. For their houses to come down. Um, so the first one is four oh three one, Deepwater Mountain Road, Fayetteville. Um, this gentleman, oh, he lives in one other place. He does not own the property, he's, his other property, but he is requesting. Voluntary demolition on this property. This is right on sixty-one. Um, he did buy it a few years ago in ten on.
Okay.
Remodeling.
I need to ask a question. The agenda says five oh three one, Deepwater Mountain.
Oh, it's four oh three one, yeah.
Okay, so we haven't noticed this one properly.
I think it's sufficiently because we have the assessors description, the map.
It probably is. I'm just a little concerned because I, I know I don't know what my tax map stuff is and if I saw it.
We need to put it on another.
But he's already volunteered, right?
He is volunteered.
Okay, okay.
He's voluntary, it's not.
The other issue.
Okay, so he has noticed.
Yes, he's gone, yeah, these, um, and I do apologize.
No, you said it, this is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just missed it.
To do what we are doing with another one, basically, we will incur the costs that he is going to sign a voluntary form. He will keep the property, but.
Okay.
Can we also put in there that if another dwelling is built back, it cannot be a vacation home? It has to be a residence? I don't think we need to do that. Sorry, John, I, I don't like that.
I don't, I don't like putting restrictions on people's properties either.
That's going too far. It's going a little to the left, in my opinion.
I mean, we, I mean, we can discuss a, a policy, but I don't. I mean, maybe especially with rehabilitating homes, but I don't know, I don't like to put restrictions on, on land because then that affects. Their transferability.
And he is volunteering.
Yeah, and the, well, and the law favors, um, you know, the fewest possible restrictions on transferability of land. But, um, I'm open to discuss something. I just don't think that's proper.
I think you'd have to go through the beautification, I'd have to go through the planning commission and it would have to go through, we'd have to request it through the planning commission that that he added.
We don't have any regulations for vacation homes anyway.
Oh, okay. It'd have to be a process anyway. I don't think William Long could do that. I think you have to go through.
Really, the municipalities that have the biggest problem with vacation homes, I think.
Yeah.
But, um, so I move that we approve the, the agreement. With regard to this.
We're going to enter into an agreement with the property owner to voluntarily demolish this.
We're gonna enter into an agreement with the property owner to voluntarily demolish this.
Second, all in favor? You not agree, John?
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
I I move that we, um, enter into this.
Oh.
Agreement with the property owner.
Did I miss it, babe?
Yeah, you just need to say I if you agree.
Okay, alright, it's okay. Twenty one more days, that's all I could say. And I have my search.
Okay, have you seen it?
No.
Okay. Sorry, Ensign.
Alright, next one. Alright.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, sir.
Alright, so, um, the next one, you guys actually spoke to this lady, um, she's an elderly lady that lives in Crawley. This was her and her sister's house, but she was gonna get a contractor and he was a little shady and she really doesn't have the money. And she only owns one other property in Crawley, which is how she resides in, so she's also requesting voluntary demolition.
Motion.
And this is the one you guys got.
Are these, are these, are we doing these with grant funding?
Yes.
Okay, so I move that we approve that property as well.
Second, all in favor?
I I move that we approved it, John.
I looked at even said it, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright.
Uh huh, and see if we leave? Okay. Thank you.
So the next one is on Dempsey Road, um, this is another lady who her and her husband, um, they basically, they did wanna sell this property, but it does have. This burned up structure on it, so, but they now decide they wanna, you know, keep it, but they are willing to do a volunteer.
I motion to approve.
For grant?
Yeah.
All these should be re-grant is what they.
Yes, those are for targeting, we have to spend that two hundred by March, so.
Okay.
Try to do the voluntary.
Second, all in favor?
And this was one on Dempsey Road, she was supposed to have a hearing last month, her husband is kind of really bad illness and she was unable to attend a meeting. But I spoke to her and they are also requesting voluntary demolition.
Motion to, motion to approve, second, all in favor?
Okay, and this gentleman, he, um, the next two are owned by the same person, I just wanna, um, clear that, this was a house fire. Um, that happened in April, this gentleman does wanna do voluntary demolition on this property cuz he does wanna keep the property, it was his uncle's. Um, but he is wanting to enter in a voluntary, um, demolition, but I wanted to mention the next house because the next house. He owns this one as well, but after consideration, he does not want the property anymore, so he is willing to do. Voluntary demolition on the white one and deed us over this property.
L R A.
Yes, so I just, um, I wanted to.
Just, just to clear, the one at sixty two eighty five, he's wanting to convey to the L R A.
Correct.
I motion to approve.
And then. Voluntary.
And so, yes, so the first one.
You lead me down the road.
Yeah, let's, let's do one.
I want, I'm sorry, sorry, John, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the voluntary demolition for grant funding on the Golly River Road address.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I really don't think we can vote on the next one, I mean.
Well, this one, we're also, I mean, we're gonna have to use, if we get a deed, you're gonna have to approve to voluntary demolition.
Yeah.
So I mean, we have to put.
So should we get a deed, I move that we approve the the voluntary demolition of sixty two eighty five million.
All all in favor, uh, yeah.
I wanna make sure we can get it voted.
Well, that way we don't have to pull it again.
Okay, yeah, there you go.
But that is good, we actually, I mean, we served him back and.
Yeah, he, we, yeah, I remember, we had a lot of questions about whether that one was fireborne.
Actually, it was made out of same stone block and it turns out it's just cinder block and.
With cover over it.
And I do think. Clear this one, we have a public debate with that, be willing to buy, and that's an I sort of.
And I do, I do want the commission, the commissioners and the to know and, uh, uh, Angel, I have worked out a process. A different process than what we've been going by to deal with his houses, I'll send the information to Michael Taylor. And he's gonna give us some information back to you. I just wanna talk about a little bit.
And real quick, I got like three minutes, so, um, and you guys know we have that county map that we've been doing to do dilapidated houses. As of this morning, there's about three hundred we did houses on that map.
Three hundred and fifty, you gotta be kidding me.
No, there is a lot.
Even I found one.
Did you put it on the map?
No, I didn't, I thought you did.
I put it on the map.
Yeah, I emailed it to you, so I thought you put it on there.
I think at this point, we have two structures on the ground and we got bids today, the three and then.
Yes, and then this process actually should go very fast, basically, I'm gonna put bids for demolition and then Anthony will get those voluntary and all of these. Um, are very willing to sign up.
I'm gonna go ahead and that means something, the demo paper won't.
Yeah.
Right away, before we get the bids, so see if you get the bids.
Yeah, it'll take till January to get this. I, well, I do and other people do and anybody, a citizen.
So have you seen one, if I'm out about six of them?
You go to, it was like, and there's a, an app, you can just fill it in with one. But that's all I got, so go back and tell them.
Alrighty, is Michelle presenting this last one, this, oh, Anthony is, oh, oh, there you, you were back there earlier, so I was like, I was like.
So basically, just one, we're requesting that you guys appoint as, well, it's not a request, it says shall be appointed in the code, but. The sheriff as administrator of the state, um, this is three siblings and a stepfather.
Were they notified?
They were, all three, the siblings were all notified and and the, uh, stepfather, um. It's gets a little muddy, the, they were maybe common law married in Ohio. Yeah.
I noticed there was a group of people outside.
Okay, that could be them, I didn't know.
Okay, well, thank you, we, if we're going to get any deals today, then they should.
Yeah, oh, yeah, sure, I just, I just maybe they said another.
You wanna see if that's done?
You know who they are?
Uh, yeah.
The Stevens matter, yeah. To have Cypress, um, to see if they can ambush you out in the beginning and make changes to the logo.
I'm sorry.
I said, I'm gonna tell Ruth, have Cypress ambush us after the meeting so you can make changes to the logo while we're all in the same room. I'm I'm sorry, if we can don't have a logo in the meeting, but just having, that's alright.
It's just gotten so much worse.
Yeah, it's gotten, I mean, mine, yeah, so they are.
You would play play for John? No, okay.
I'll just, I I keep forgetting.
Do this to me.
You're not as bad on my side as I was afraid you would, I thought I thought you would have your arm parked up here.
I tried to stay on my 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 space.
Your real estate.
Yeah.
Why don't you conduct us and ask the questions? I have it right here.
I swear he does.
All the motion, yeah, all I have is the order, you have the motion. Can we get get your all's names, I'm Allison Taylor, I'm one of the commissioners.
I'm Debbie Fannin, I'm Kevin's daughter.
Okay, so Debbie F A N N?
I am.
I am. Is your full name Deborah?
Deborah.
Fannin, and you're her daughter?
Yes.
Okay, who else?
Uh, Tammy Dunn.
Okay.
I'm her daughter.
Okay. Okay, who else?
James Roberts, um, his son.
Okay, sir.
Where you from?
Okay. Okay, sir.
No, I'm James Nathan Roberts, grandson.
Hey, sir.
I'm Stevens.
Is it Thomas?
Right.
Okay, and what's your relation?
Live with Evelyn.
Okay.
She live with me, whatever.
Okay, so you were domestic partners, basically. And you have the same last name, is that a coincidence or were you married at some point?
They actually lived in Cleveland, Ohio, and back then, they had a law enforced that once you live with somebody for so long, it's common law law. But as of ninety one, I don't think any state recognizes it now, and then they moved here and they had never, they didn't go and get actual legal marriage.
Okay.
But they didn't get it like twenty years.
What years did you reside in Cleveland, sir? What years did did you and and Miss Stevens reside in Cleveland? What years did you reside in the state of Ohio?
I was forty five years old, she came to Cleveland.
They been.
Been a forty seven, maybe forty five, fifty years. It was nineteen seventy nine.
Okay, so nineteen seventy nine until when?
Forty five, and they moved from Cleveland, it was fifteen, it was nineteen ninety. I'm not sure if it was ninety six or seventy.
I think it's ninety six.
Okay, alright, Anthony, I'm gonna go ahead and let you ask, um, Anthony Siliberty is our prosecuting attorney, he's a lawyer for the county commission and he just wants to ask some questions cuz he's an expert in. Um, estate and property law. You are compared to me.
Well, I mean, it was something was a wheel, well, I actually have these papers that I got on my mother's bed. And I actually have the lawyer who made the wheel and the durable power attorney papers, also have his private cell number.
Okay, so you're telling me there is.
Well, no, the lawyer said that there is no wheel. My mom had this that says there's a wheel on fire attorney, and I called the lawyer in Cleveland and he said there is no wheel. And he even left his.
Now, now, take a look at what you have now.
This was the, for her attorney for both of them, and his number is on the bottom.
So the attorney that you spoke with says he did not prepare a will?
Well, he said that actually he does not have a copy of the will, so as of today, there is none of it. She did the wheel back then, but. But we can't find it.
Did you check with the county clerk in in the county where she lived by?
Yeah, the lawyer did, and he, um, said there is none of it. And I tried to, if he give give me a copy of it, and he said that he did not have one.
And in all those other documents you have, there's nothing that you believe might be a will?
No, I went through everything that I could find and I cannot, you know, find a wheel, so this is why I actually called the attorney myself. And this is his name, his address, his phone number, his cell number, his email, and he also said a Zoom call or anything, feel free to come back to me.
Why, as a member of the family? But I should be appointed as a manager.
All three of them. We consider that there was all their interests, if any one of them, it will be. We felt there is way for the end, there was something concerning that there was a will that was not been turned in because it did not make her, uh, one family member or another. He made that about that, um, and because of the common law marriage situation and laws and statutes and inheritance. Whether or not there was a will, whether or not they were actually, could be considered married, make a large difference in what.
So do was do do according to hand of the state.
This my call for both daughters within days of, uh.
Specifically.
Uh, Everlyn, Fannin, and Tammy Dunn.
I'm sorry, do?
Uh, Tammy Dunn, I had a call, but I, I'm gonna have issues, I have health issues right now.
Okay.
So I feel.
And so basically, Miss Fannin, then Miss Dunn, and who was the third person?
Miss Roberts.
Are you Miss Roberts? Yes, sir, okay, where do you live, sir, Roanoke, Virginia? Okay, and Miss, Miss Dunn, you basically said you you can't do it because.
No, I'm having health issues right now.
I understand.
And I I can do it right.
And Miss Fannin, where do you live?
In O P.
Um, are you guys willing to share the handle of the estate?
That's what we were telling you, telling.
No, that's not what I asked you, do you want the sheriff to handle the estate?
Yeah, we might as well, we don't beat it on, we might as well to get, like, I think to be wrong.
Okay, you guys, you do not have phones, sheriff really need it, you just kind of got what I'm hearing.
Well, I I would like to know about family conflict, yes, I'm glad, because what do you, like, to care my mother, I actually knew of them since the first year. And then when she passed away, I had to take my son back to Texas. And everything went whirlwind while we standing.
Okay, I'm not sure I'm gonna be shaking your legs.
Well, you know, we're here because of the family conflict, and like she said, you know, we don't need to speak, what's the conflict while we're not speaking?
Well, I can't answer that.
Yeah, that's why I'm interested.
Well, ma'am, this is, um, this completely, it's. I'm not trying to be callous, but this proceeding is not.
I know, that didn't have anything to do with it.
It's not appropriate, the purpose of the proceeding is not to commend fences between family members, and I'm sorry that it's fun with this, but. Um, and Miss Hall, you believe the most appropriate way of dealing with this is to say we'd be to have sheriff, whatever, and we could say because. You have concerns based on the family members being able to remain. Biased and are you have concerns that they will be biased when they wish to be safe?
I do.
Okay. We don't, we get in light of the fact that we had no objection from the family and given what Miss Hall was set to work. I think we we have sufficient basis to appoint the sheriff.
Okay, I move we appoint the sheriff to be the, um, what's it, executor or?
Administrator.
Administrator of of the estate of Evelyn Ruth Stevens.
Something that's gonna have to be looked into is whether or not. I mean, that I, I don't know the answer to this, I know West Virginia recognizes common law marriages. If they are recognized in the state in which they originate, West Virginia does not, you can't enter into a common law marriage in the state. Because if you do elsewhere. And it's recognized from that state and then you move to West Virginia, and West Virginia very well recognize. Um, West Virginia very well can recognize a common law affair, so that's one of the issues. Then, does Miss Hall, we have all of your contact information as far as addresses and phone numbers?
So the family doesn't want to maintain any conflict, then why can't the family settle this stake together, I'm what, I'm just asking, it's all reached out in the room. And that's my my grandmother.
You want us to see if we can provide you some some space to meet and discuss a little bit before we make the decision?
Well. This state, like, grown people, what is the conflict, what is the jealousy, what is the, uh, uh, bias of 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 keeping something from somebody? All I'm concerned about is all her status, so.
Somebody. And told that lady that there was a conflict.
And like when I walked.
I showed up to handle them, I can say, so I, and I was told I could not because it was a conflict with the family.
I didn't show up here to be biased or have power over anybody or get something from someone or somebody or anything like that. We showed up here point blank simply to handle her estate, I drove three hundred mile round trip, round trip, round trip to do this from Cleveland. To stay and be with my mother to help her in this emotional time, it's hard on all of us. It's hard on all of us, and I know that, and everybody grieves in different ways. And, um, I just don't understand why these, this family of mine. Can't resolve this like normal people. Point blank period, just like I said, I don't understand, and I'm confused, because. She said there's supposed to be a will, and then said there's conflict with the family, I didn't know there was any conflict, except some dumb rumor. That was made up about some other lady in a trailer park which had my mother's name, and it got everything all out of whack, and everybody mad at everybody.
I mean, we, I hate for you that y'all are going through it, I mean, it's, it's hard enough to grieve, as you pointed out, I mean, it really is. And, and Commissioner Lewis has just lost his dad, I mean, we, we all relate, and we've both lost both of our parents, so. Um, but, but because the county clerk has concerns about the objectivity. Whether they are still concerned, I think it's probably best, I think you made the right decision in having the sheriff administer the state. Especially if you've got a couple people who are sick, um, who, who would otherwise be doing, and it is tough trying, there's a lot of work involved in that sort of thing. And plus, the issue needs to be resolved about whether, um, your grandmother was legally wed to her husband. And, and it sounds to me like frankly, she was, um, so. Um, but it, it, that's something that does have to be resolved, and the sheriff can make sure that happens before any of her estate is distributed. So that, you know, that's, that's, you know, I think you, you guys are making the right decision here. Since there are some questions about whether there's a conflict, and the county clerk is concerned based on calls her offices receive. On, on whether anybody who's involved would, you know, might have some bias, whatever it is.
And I, I can ask a couple more questions to make sure, um. Did Miss Stevens have any children that passed away before, but? No, okay, and please don't take offense to this question, I have asked this to the community of the commanders. Um, all of you who are her children, are you all children of the same father? Yes, sir. All right, that's simplified, and the reason I'm asking is it depends, depending upon whether or not. It, it just, it has an impact on how the estate ends up being divided under West Virginia law, depending upon. Um, what we determine on the issue of the common law.
Okay, so my motion is, is on the floor. There's a.
That's second. All in favor?
Aye.
I think she were done. You did the second, I heard that she.
And it is hard, yeah, it is hard.
It is really hard, so, um. Anyway, we appreciate all of you coming, so we could hear from you all and, and see what you all thought, that made it a lot easier for us.
And I apologize to all y'all, I didn't realize, I knew every one of you, when I passed by, running to the restroom, running back. I, I'm trying to get in here, I didn't realize, I knew.
You might have noticed he's a little out of sorts with this.
Yeah.
Arm.
Yeah, I got married recently, and she took it out on my.
Because they told everybody his wedding date was such ever thirty first, that might have been it.
Yes, I have a question.
This man.
Off the record, okay?
Well, it's on the record.
I buried my husband in North Carolina, and of course, and I had her weight, okay? He had children by another young, but. I understood that, you know, you had to wait so many days to begin the will collector, you know, to put anything in the estate. Before you can settle it, and that nobody should take anything out of the home or anything, and so it's.
That's usually how it works, but, but that's not how it always practically works.
Mr. Pigley made a notice. The things that go.
Okay.
His sister came in.
Ma'am, what I'll do is I'll encourage you to tell Sheriff Fridley. What you have to say, so he'll, so he can ask the right questions as he's doing his job. Um, telling us here is just gonna, you know, be a waste of breath, because we, there's nothing we can do now that we've appointed him, he'll be the one to, uh. To take that information and make decisions based on it.
Yeah, he'll make the reference.
So, um, anyway, well, we appreciate y'all coming in, and, and we have several restaurants, as you know, being from here, close by. If you wanted to get together and try to resolve some of your.
Now, should I go and see him and let him have these papers?
If you, if you wanna, want us to make copies, we'll be happy, you know, Michelle's office can probably, can somebody in your office make copies for him? Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay, well, thank you for coming.
Sorry again.
Yeah, we're sorry for your loss.
I, 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 I had one question, but the lady said nothing about, I mean, and I know this is her state, but. You know, she's got property tied to this in Ohio, right?
Um, we have no jurisdiction over property located in Ohio.
That means anything, I want to know that.
If she owns property in Ohio, it does get addressed through the state.
Right.
Here?
Yes.
It does.
I mean, there's. I don't know along Ohio, but if there's paperwork that is filed here in West, if somebody out of state. But an out of state residence has property here in West Virginia, they make work. Regarding their state gets filed here to address. Um, ownership of that property and who it passes to.
You should probably write up the, the property that you know of. And its address and that sort of thing, and provide to the sheriff so he's aware of it.
But he owns several properties here, they own property in North Carolina, he owns three, uh, properties in Cleveland, Ohio. So all that filing here.
If, if it's, if her property, if it's her property also. Yes. Yeah, I would say list it for the sheriff and let him figure it out, because that's what the administrator will do.
The deed sets upon survivorship, it doesn't pass through the state.
Like, right?
If the deed sets upon survivorship between the others, one of them is survivorship.
But.
It does not pass through.
There's some, but.
I would say. Okay, yeah, and.
Yeah, go straight, go straight for survivorship.
I would say anything you want the sheriff to have, maybe provide to the county clerk, because she's the one who has the file. On it.
Are we gonna, yes.
We need to get back to the pool.
Well, I was gonna say the pool.
Yeah.
Thank y'all, sorry again.
We have copies of minutes from, let's take a break.
We'll take a break, take a break.
Ten minutes.
Now, we'll call this meeting back to order. Uh, dealing with the pool, and I think John wanted to say a few words first, I believe.
In order to come up with a plan, we had to know exactly what we were dealing with under, you know, underneath the pool itself. So that's what they did, and now that we know that. We can, or they can develop the drawings so it can be bid out. So that, that.
So they had to do, um.
They had to explore, investigate it.
Investigate some preliminary work. And that was part of the seventy-five thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm, yeah, all of this is, but the first seventy-five that you authorized, that's were one. This second, one hundred and nine, or whatever exact number it is.
I want you to go over the seventy-five thousand that we.
It's all part of the million dollar fix.
Okay.
It's not in addition to the million.
Okay, it's not in addition to.
It's part of the million dollar fix.
Okay, seventy-five thousand was, but, but. But we don't, what I'm, only thing I was questioning is we don't have a, a design, do we have a design?
No, you got a preliminary engineering report that, that, that determined the extent of the voids. How much you's gonna have to do, how much site work you gonna have to do to fix that area. And then you had all the preliminary concepts and costs to get us in, in areas where you could say, okay, this is what I want. That's the preliminary engineering, that's what you pay for. The, the next task, so, can I step right here?
Well, I don't mind.
Can you approach?
May I approach the minutes? Paul, you wanted to say that, okay, there, there's your pool, there's phase one. There's the preliminary site options, preliminary engineering site options for the seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
That's what you did first, and then here's all of this. The, what we're asking for now is to do the final design, the permitting, the R P R, having construction management taking its thing to bid. Preparing the bid packages and all that, and that's that part of that hundred and eighty, say it's a hundred and eighty-four. And that includes everything, you've already paid the seventy-five, now the, the remainder is one oh nine, but it's all part of the million dollar fix.
Okay, well. Anthony, how did you read that R F P? I, I'm sure what I'm confused at, I mean.
Be a little more specific.
Huh? Doesn't say we're supposed to have a design in the pool, is that R F P put out to do a design in the pool?
I mean, that's the way.
Architecture and design.
Basically, it says if we complete it by the time it returns to the part of the empty pool, which can be salvaged.
Uh, I think what. It's my understanding now, what Chris is saying is that their response to the R F P was in phases. And phase one was to vet the feasibility of putting the pool there, fixing it there. Um, and then phase two includes. The other, other response to the R F P, which is the design, is that what you were saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that, is that what John's saying too?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't, I didn't want to, I didn't want to have you sign an engineering agreement for, say, one and a half million dollars for us to do all this work. And then you guys decide, okay, this is what we're doing, so we, that's why when I was talking to you guys about if we do it in task orders. That we might be able to save you money and, and keep the cost down, because I'm only working on what you want me to work on.
Okay, what was the forty-two fifty page?
Yeah.
Forty-two five, that was that G P R word.
Was that, wasn't that to, to see whether it was feasible to be able to put the pool back where it was?
That was to see if it was even close, yeah.
Even feasible to put it there, right?
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, to see if there was any like major, like, okay, there's a huge mine, I think we looked for high voids, and we did G P R.
And you, you're supposed to run lights through the pipes too, to see if the pipes is okay or not, right?
There wasn't a giant voids in it.
So then, I thought from that, you said. We needed that to start with to see if we can have a first design to build it there.
Right.
Okay, and then I thought the R F P, since we knew the condition, and whether it could be put there. That R F P was put out to get a design, and I, I mean, have we paid the seventy-five thousand, I mean, that's stupid for me to even ask that.
I don't know.
But, but I mean, I mean. Okay, so, in other words, you don't get the seventy-five thousand unless we go to the second stage.
No, no, you gotta sign an agreement for the seventy-five.
Okay, so.
You sign, you signed a task order which had a scope.
Okay, so.
Yes.
Yes, so the seventy-five thousand was just for you to. Do what?
Preliminary engineering, geotechnical drilling, so we can just start, so you could go to the design. It's the preliminary engineering.
But I gotta, we, we done two different, and, and I know I keep going back to this, but maybe I'm wrong. We done a R F P to start with for you to do that preliminary to see if you can be, even be built there, and then after you.
Yeah, but that was a, that was like a G P R mine, we'd reset, it's kind of like just a quick desktop study. Putting boots on the ground to make sure, that, that's all that was.
Here's something, though, I can't, now I'm kind of seeing what you're getting at. Because in the R F P, it says an engineering study was recently completed, which determined locations of leaks and problematic areas of existing pool. Is that a, are we talking about a different study in there?
It was, it was the. That one, I'll be right back.
That, that, that was it, I mean, it wasn't an engineering.
Hold on, I'll be right back.
Yeah, it wasn't, I mean, it wasn't such an engineering study, that was more of a making sure you didn't have mine voids and stuff.
I wasn't able to hear all your response, I was distracted by all of that, but. But I, I see what, I see what he's getting at here, because this implies that that was already done, even though the seventy-five was spent after this.
It, it, it wasn't the preliminary engineering.
It wasn't a full P R, it was like a.
Yeah, it was just a four thousand dollar, we did G P R out in the field to see if there was any giant voids. And then we looked for deep mines, any type of mining activity that could have been undermined the pool, it could have caused it to have cavities underneath it. And based on that stuff, you know, maybe we, we did video of the pipes, make sure there's no giant leaks or anything, something. Like a, like a real quick, easy fix, so to speak.
Yeah, this is what he, so.
Yeah.
Explain that again to, to Tom, so he, um, because he brought that, he brought that in. Um, he said it was, he said that was more like a preliminary, it wasn't a full.
Yeah.
I thought it was determined whether it can even be built there, or if there was any voids, or anything to cause, if it was built there, that would fall back in.
It was, it was, but not to the extent that you could build a pool on top of it, it was to make sure, okay, there's no giant deep mines underneath you, that's inside of. The pipes weren't like split in half, and all you had to do is go in there and put the pipe back together. And to see if there was any, you know, what was causing that pool to settle. And based on the, this report.
It says you could put it there.
It was feasible to go in there to do it. So then the preliminary engineering step was, we came in, we actually did all the geotechnical drilling. Determine the depth of the uncon, I'm not gonna call it a void, because it's unconconsolable material, there's still dirt there, it's just settled and washed out. And looked at the rebar and stuff like that, and so, okay, this is, this is how much problem you have. Based on how much problem you have and the existing conditions, we did all the survey, marked, mapped everything, all that with the seventy-five. Thousand, and then we came up with all these cost estimates and options for you to build one. And choose which one you want to go with, that's all part of like that P R, preliminary engineering. And now we're in the, what I would consider the design phase, where you're actually gonna start specing out the liners. You're gonna spec out how much flow will feel, has to go in, the type of flow will feel.
I, I.
Connecting the pool, the pumps.
I think where the miscommunication is, is that, and, you know, I've been in some of the meetings, but where. The designs that you guys provided were not consistent with. His initial instruction and that we, you know, we were always working on a very constrained budget on this.
Yeah, yeah, I wish, I wish y'all guys would have said off the bat, hey, this is what you have to work with, and then. Because, I mean, like Matt and them, like they said, there's no way they would have ever, you know, we gave you three options. Well, first we gave you three options, I think, and then we came back with a fourth one, then we came back with a fifth one, and.
My option was always to start whatever it was to get it fixed, and move into three other. To be able to upgrade it three times, up three or four times, that's, that was my, from the very beginning, that's what I said from the very.
Yeah, and I, I think me and you talked like two and a half million at one point, and stuff like that, you know. Depending upon where you wanted to end up is where phase one starts. So if you wanted one of the previous options that we had, then fixing it would be a complete waste of a million dollars. But now that you've kind of morphed this into, we're gonna use the existing footprint, and, and that's what we're gonna build on. Now it makes sense to spend.
Y'all give a, y'all give an outlook on the very first one that was used to consisting of footprint.
It was with the slides and the deep end.
No, 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 it was just to use the pool as is, it was forty-two, four, four point, four point two million dollars. It's four point two million dollars, and, and that was to use it existing the way it was, correct?
Right, with, with all new pumps and the concession stands and the, the bath house. The bath house came out, it saved a, a pound of money, when he's, when you guys told him to do the, the bath house himself, it saved a, a lot of, a lot of money.
My problem is the R F P reads, and I thought we should have a design, um, that we could take to bid.
Well, you're still on track, Ben, over to have, have the design, you've got all the preliminary engineering stuff now. It's, it's ready, so if you wanted to move forward.
So all that work that you did with the, with the drawing on paper, seventy-five thousand was a drawing on paper, right?
And the preliminary engineering.
And drilling, the geotechnical, and, yeah, I mean, it's, there's a whole, I mean, it's not just. Like, yeah, there's a whole lot to it, Tom.
Okay, well, I, I just thought this one covered the drill, I thought to, to do the drilling was seven.
The drilling was like twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand?
Drilling's not cheap, it's very expensive, flat geotechnical drilling, though, very expensive. And that's why I didn't want you to spend the money to drill it. And then find out there was a friggin' deep mine underneath it, and you couldn't do nothing to start with, I was just trying to make it to where we wasn't spending. Aimlessly spending my taxpayer money, to be honest with you. I felt like that was a better approach to see, to put four thousand dollars in it and see if it's something that's even doable. And then based on what report it was, we got with our experts, and it's like, yeah, we can work with this, we have to know the. And then based on that report it was, we got with our experts and I was like, yeah, we can work with this. We have to know the extent of the problem.
That's the ground.
Ground and your radar.
Okay, so you gotta have the drilling after the ground.
You gotta have the ground, people do it before you do the drilling, make sure there's nothing. You gotta, you gotta know where the pipes are at, you gotta know if there's any electric in the way, you stick a drill down into the concrete, hit a fire line, kill your guy.
Okay, so I guess we need to put an R F P out for somebody to give us a design, is that right?
You got an R F P out for that.
Where?
That that's our agreement, that do you, did you read the original agreement that we signed? It's just like a, this is just like a Bay sewer project.
We can't do a, we can't do a.
Yeah, you you could R F P and and hire a different engineer at this point, absolutely.
No, I I didn't say that, I just said, do we need to do an R F P for the pool?
No, it's it's already covered under the original agreement that we signed.
I think, I think where we are now is to get, we can decide whether to fund this. This task order, which would have to be amended to not say we approved anything at the November first meeting because we didn't.
Yeah, we can strike.
Um, yeah, it it would have to come out before we sent.
You'll say, that's probably called this like a site, I think he's calling it option five. We could say option five, things one, to move forward, option five, phase one or something like that.
Yeah.
Is what it probably ought to say.
Yeah, because that meeting, we we were just trying to get information, so um. So the way I see our options right now, Tom, are we can. You know, authorize New River this hundred and nine thousand to come up with the design and everything on this list or. Or part of, or the design specific stuff on this list and if we want to bid it and all that stuff um. Or we can, like he said, go out and acquire another firm to do that.
Well, what I'd like to do is go after earmark.
Earmark funding for.
Earmark funding for it.
Do you think, Amy?
What he has.
Do we have enough information based on what you have to?
That's what Jenna said. Yeah, well, it's not, well, I guess it is grant funded, but it's earmarked, up to a million dollars.
And in the, in the seventy five thousand we've spent today, preparing these packets and stuff is more than enough information. Like I could work with Jenna and help her fill out all those applications, we could submit all of them.
I don't think she'll have a problem filling them out, she just needs the information.
She'll just need like the engineering.
I don't see, I don't see us paying another hundred thousand dollars and then either we don't have the money. Or something comes up doing it, I would rather go after earmark to fund the rest of it. Is what I would rather do.
Well, you know how I feel about this because I've 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 told y'all, like I'm I'm concerned about a million dollars. Even a million dollars, which is the lowest number you guys were able to come up with, is a huge percentage of our budget to go toward this one project that would benefit. So few, such a low percentage of residents here, even though it's sentimental to everybody, I mean, from a practical perspective. Um, so, so I feel like earmark funding is the way to go, this, it's kind of feel good project, they love to fund in earmarks.
And and then you could ask for, I mean, you could ask for the whole entire all five phases.
No, it only goes a million dollars.
Oh, is that what they do?
I've already, I've already done the research. It's million dollars, it's million dollar is what they go with. And I think Amy even said they, that's what they prefer is million dollar projects. Because I've talked to Jenna about it about two months ago.
That doesn't mean we couldn't um budget and find grant funding to do the other phases, that just means that we're trying to get the first phase.
Ask for earmark next year to do another phase or something.
We, in in fact, when we do this, this is my recommendation based on what we learned from the sewer projects we put in for money for. And because they turned it down because they didn't understand that the Anstead upgrade was related, was the first phase of all the other phases we needed. That we do either tie this as a phased project and and make it clear that phase one will provide a swimming pool and the ultimate. Phases will, you know, add additional features to the park um.
That's the way I want to do it, I mean, I don't.
And and the agreement that you already signed, that you signed, you signed the engineering agreement for us to do the work for you and then you signed task order one. Which was the preliminary engineering portion.
To me, I.
Those are all part, that you can upload that into your grant application and it it's already specked out faced.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, Jenna said what he did have to work with that.
Okay, all right, well, I agree with you on that, so so what's the next step then today, so we just.
I guess we make a decision to make a vote or something to go after earmarks with it.
Okay, I don't, we don't typically vote on that step, or I guess we do.
I think we.
I mean, if if you want my assistance, when I would like for you to say, yes, this is what I want you to do and then I'll I'll get it.
I think we just, what I'd like to do is go after earmark based on the little preliminary you did. You go after earmarks and see if we get an earmark.
Yeah. And the money spent the day goes with your match.
I mean, I, earmark, I don't think you have to go match.
We don't have to match an earmark.
Earmark, you don't have to match.
Do you?
No.
Fully funded. Yep, which is good, good news, so um I moved that we um engage in R G R D A. And and to work with New River Engineering um to submit for an earmark. For the first, well, for all five phases of the pool, but prioritize phase one, obviously.
Second, all in favor?
All right, sorry, that was so painful, I'm glad we got it all clarified.
All right, before, before you leave, before you go. I wanted to bring something to your eyes' attention, just, I asked Ruth, it was kind of last minute for me and she said I could at least tell you. The town Meadow Bridge were working on a senior citizen community center for me. And um.
Yeah, they used to have one.
What is it?
Is that a voting location?
It used to be one, but.
We get our utilities.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
And and they've got, I think there's some major issues with it, like the heat and stuff, they got some problems, so. They they put out, they got money from USDA. You got about five hundred and forty seven thousand dollars is what they have, just in on a new community building. Their council, their seniors have asked for a little bit more than what they got money to do with. And I'm working with the region four Mitch, USDA Daniel, and we're going to try to get them a little bit more funding to come in. One of the things that they're really concerned with is wanting to have an emergency generator system that will operate the building and incapacity for their. Refrigerators and freezers and have the heat and cool because they don't have a warming center for their seniors in that area. I think when they had some power.
If the commission doesn't mind, can you give Ruth the information, Ruth can call him, see what it would cost?
Yeah, um, if you do.
Yeah, I've I've got, I I was going to give this to you, all three of you, I brought one copy, you can look at it. And and that's, she can give, I'm not asking you to, I I just wanted to put this in front of you and then maybe somewhere say. February, February, I'll probably come back to you, try to get on the agenda.
February is when we're making decisions on outside funding.
So that would be a good meeting?
Yeah, I don't know which, the second, we don't know which meeting yet, but.
Well, let's just.
So this, this is already pre-approved?
If you get it in.
That, that is what the town of Meadow Bridge, the senior citizen ha- has, they they said to do, this is what they're wanting. Danielle said she thought she could get a, maybe get another two, three hundred thousand. I was going to ask the commission if they can maybe help with the generator.
But but I'm saying is this, all this has been pre-approved to to design and do?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we we started working on the design for them. And this will be a a pre-fash structure, it's a new building.
We have an investment, everything we're planning to up there, yeah. So we, we have, we kind of informally set aside money for each of our districts to. To invest in those areas and we put some in the P S D's up there. Um, but we haven't fully invested what we had, you know, conceived that we would in that area, so there is funding. And this sounds like a good project.
Well, yeah, we give them some some area.
Uh, I think I know where that's at.
Yeah, it's right across from what, well, I call it town hall, they they got their own hotel, they got one room in that, so, yeah.
I think I s- I think I seen.
But now that's second page, let let me have this second page, this was just for me because I was trying to show them what they could do with the.
Cut, cut costs?
Cut their costs.
Yeah. Yeah, you leave it in there, I mean, hell.
They'd have to have a, they'd have to have an eleven hundred square foot building to to be able to have what they got, what they're wanting is a twenty three hundred square foot, so. But, yeah, we can.
With wheelchairs and stuff like that, you probably need more space.
Yeah, the one they got now is not really ADA accessible and when they do try bringing wheelchair in there, they have to keep the doors open so long that the whole building gets so cold that the seniors can't use it. So they're they're struggling, but no, I just wanted to bring that, uh, Mayor, Mayor Killen, he was. For whatever reason, Meadow Bridge, I always feel like they're kind of out there on the stick and he he said, he said, be nice, it's the commission, help us.
Be nice to be asked us.
I know. I said, I'll be, I'll be meeting with them, so.
He wants to come down here, so um we have, despite his um failure to ask us for anything, have invested in that community already and we had. Already discussed um.
Yeah, I was looking at school the other day when I was down there.
So this sounds like a a good project to receive some of those funds that we had kind of informally set aside for that area.
All right.
So what I'll probably do, I'll probably invite him to come when we.
Good idea.
For the February meeting, then if if we'll be a little.
Maybe invite him to talk to the mayor's of Anstead Montgomery about how well funded they are when they show up at meetings.
Mayor Pridemore is very uh, very uh vocal.
Very pro, very pro commission, yeah.
My motion to adjourn.
Same, second.